How you doing? You okay? I called an order, the Roseville Board of Commissioners work session. This is March 18th, 2025. Just want to welcome everybody. Thank you very much. We got an agenda we want to jump into. So first is a consideration agenda. We got three items on there. Updated the five-year capital improvement plan, updated affordable housing project, and introduced rezoning cases. So that's the intro, I guess, intro to rezoning case. Do I hear a motion on the agenda?
So moved.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, thank you very much. First item is update five-year capital improvement plan. Amy Stevens and I think Eric. You guys going to tag team that, so I'll turn it over to you.
City Mayor, Commissioners. So tonight on our agenda is follow-up from your budget work session last month. Discussion about the five-year CIP financial model. So just to reorient all of everybody, this financial model is a model that we update annually. We've been working with the town's financial advisor, Davenport Associates, for several years now to craft this realistic, fundable, five-year CIP. It's been a long journey. We're finally here, we finally are there, and we have this model we've been using. I do want to just start off a little bit, giving you a little bit of a different way of thinking about this. We often call this the five-year financial model because we're looking at five years of projects. But I do want to heighten your awareness that this model is looking at 30 years, 30 years of revenues and expenditures, okay? So it's not just looking at a five-year period. This is looking at a very long-term period in terms of the town's finances. And that will be important to keep in mind as we go through. So because this was a pretty simple update from your work session, the information we got from you all is that the model generally includes the projects, the priorities that are your priorities. And so rather than bringing Davenport back in to do some minor updates and adjustments, Eric and I felt like we could handle the presentation tonight. But we can always bring our Davenport experts in if we have further questions later on. All right, so let's start off. This is the financial model that we were working with a year ago. So calling it the 2024 financial model. It's good to always update this model because, I don't know about you, but my crystal ball doesn't work all that well. And we have to make a lot of assumptions about the things that go in this model. And so it's good to revisit, at least annually, to update those assumptions and make sure that we're still working with the same facts that we were a year before. As we go through, one of the things I do want to mention is the projects. So you're going to hear me talk a little bit about projects in FY '26 through FY '28. And if you look at this, there's a few adjustments we've made to these projects when I use that terminology. These are all the same up here under the facilities. It's basically the town campus site. We have assumed that these street projects for Granite Falls Boulevard and Rogers Road is probably going to be coming out here somewhere. It's going to be a little delayed. So when I talk about projects in '26 to '28, I'm not including those. But it does include farm activation, but not this project out here in the future. And then the economic development site is also moved out here. We just wanted to leave some room in the model if you guys did want to purchase some land in order for the town to market that for some sort of economic development.
So all three of them move?
Yeah, I think what we'll actually, I think what we talked about doing is just putting it together into one lump sum, maybe in like FY '29, something like that. Again, the idea here is just to make sure we have some room in the model to deal with those calls. All right, so that's where we were a year ago. So let's spend just a minute to talk about what are the components that go into this model. And the pages in your handout, which is a copy of this presentation, refer to pages in the Davenport updated model that we're using tonight. So one of the first components is debt obligations, right? This is really more fact than assumption because it looks at what are the town's debt obligations today? And when it comes to debt obligations, when we're doing the budget each year, the debt is the first thing we budget. Before we budget for people, before we budget for operations, we budget for debt. If the town defaults on its debt, it runs the risk of having the state come in and take over financial operations for the town. It is the A number one expenditure we have to budget. Other components, the property tax base, what revenues are available to go into this model over that 30-year period, and then what projects do you want to fund? So I'm going to go ahead and go through each slide. And you know I hate these detailed slides and I hate putting them on the screen. But they're really the best thing to show you what we're talking about. So I tried to use the circles to at least draw your eyes to the right place, okay? So the first thing on our list, like components of model, was debt obligations. And so this is from Davenport's model. It shows you what is the current debt for the town. Now, there is a slight change from last year because on July 1, the town will be unifying, closing on that unification with the fire department. And the fire department brings a little bit of debt with it. We have three pieces of debt currently. We're looking at paying off two of them at closing. And then the last one is that 0% interest loan, and there's really no benefit to paying it off. So what we've done is added that loan into this chart.
Oh, can we legally keep that one? Because I was wondering.
We're going to work. I have not dove into getting that assigned over to us yet, but we'll be working on that in the next few weeks to find out if that's possible. But for these purposes, we went ahead and assumed we'll be taking over that debt. All right, our second component was the property tax base. Now, a few years ago, when we first started doing this model, we would just take a reasonable percentage growth. And I can't remember what those numbers were, 3%, 4%, 5% growth we do. A couple of years ago, we said, you know, this percentage growth really isn't working for us because we know that we've got two very large commercial projects with Walbrook and Cobblestone coming on board. We know that the town board has authorized 2,500 new residential lots with developments that they've approved. And so we feel like using that standard percentage isn't going to work for us anymore. And so for the last couple of years when we've done this model, we've used a really detailed analysis, looking at commercial properties that have been approved, residential properties that have been approved. We have changed tactics a little bit again with this model. We've gone to a little hybrid of those two approaches. It is both looking back at what we've done historically and looking forward about what's been approved and what's to come. Why this different approach? Some of these commercial projects are now starting to show on the tax base. Some of the residential permits, where we made projections about how many permits were going to be taken out, are not quite meeting expectations. They're still high, I'm sure Meredith would attest to that. They're still high, but they're not quite at the level of expectation we had. And then we're also currently in an uncertain economic climate. And so we were a little concerned about putting property tax-based projections that were over and above what the average has been, the historical average. So if you look at that second bullet point on that page, when you exclude revaluations, the average annual growth rate has been 8.69%. So what we've done in this model is we're, again, we looked at some of those commercial projects, what's left to come on board, some of the residential, plus the historical. So for a four-year period, we're projecting 8% growth based on known development and historical experience. And then we've got two years at 6% and then ranging down to 3%. The further you get out, the more uncertainty there is, and so you want to be more concerned. So that's what we've done. This is a little bit of a reduction from last year's property tax base because of this new methodology. But again, we're in a period of economic uncertainty. Reduction in the growth rate.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And I think that's really good, but that's not policy, though. That's kind of the plan. But I do know, and you probably know this, some communities in Wake County are in serious trouble today because they didn't plan for this decrease in growth. And, you know, it's eventually going to happen to us. Now, whether it happens in, you know, 2034, I don't know. But we got to be able to continue our services at the level we continue without growth at some point in time or really reduce growth. And I don't think some communities planned for that. They did not.
Particularly as we, for the sake of people that may be watching, some communities have over-hired in anticipation of the growth in scaling up of level of services and haven't seen that amount of growth. And so they are now are kind of compressing and consolidating. And that's particularly tough looking at some of the uncertainty we may have over the next few months when it comes to federal funding around certain positions and programs, particularly for counties. And then also counties are reporting lower sales tax revenues. So some of our neighboring ones, I mean, they're showing an average swing down between 9 and 12% from last year. And so there are certain things that are putting pressure on.
You said they went from 29 to 12%?
Some in our area, counties in our area, reporting decreases of sales tax between 9 and 12% between last year and this year.
Yeah. Wake County is a little better than the state in that, I think. I think the state is really low, less than 2%, I think.
To your Roseville, we have not seen those decreases. But I'm on the list, sir, with other budget and finance folks, and there are communities in the state who are seeing decreases in actual revenues.
But I think when you run out of land is when you don't grow anymore.
Correct.
And, you know, I think it's happening in at least two communities in Wake County.
Correct.
Now, Raleigh playing real well, they got a lot of growth there. But, you know, a couple of them don't, and we don't really either. Once we run out, we'd be out.
And redevelopment is easier when urban, in urban settings. It's not as easy in more urban rural, rural settings.
But I kind of like that. Is that the first time I've seen that or you've had that before? This de-escalation of?
Well, I want to say in the past, we just had an even percentage, you know, back several years ago. And then two years ago is when we started that customized fee. And so now we're looking at more of that step down.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it before, but that's a good idea is to plan for less growth.
Right, right, and the uncertainty. Yep. Okay. All right, so that was our second component. The third component that goes into this model is what revenue, what revenue is available. So that's the page, oh gosh, that's all I can read, page eight, I think. So what's different this year compared to the 2024 model in terms of revenue sources? Not much, we've updated the numbers a little bit, but up here at the top half, not really any existing revenue sources changing. It's your capital savings fund, it's an excess general fund balance, it's some park and street impact fees, right? And those have to be used for specific purposes. So we can't, for example, use the street fees to pay for part of constructing a police department, right? So this model takes those restricted funds into account as well. So what's new is these last two at the bottom. When we did this model in 2024, we did not have unification agreement with the fire department approved by both boards. We do now. And so now we are including what is anticipated from their net assets coming over to the town. You remember that unification agreement puts in place the transfer of that cash balance? And the town has committed to restricting the use of those funds for the fire service. And so what we're proposing to do through the budget and with this model is to use those net assets towards the construction of the fire station. It is a very round number going in there because there's a lot of uncertainty still on what that number is going to be. But that seems to be a reasonable estimate for what we can expect to get from them. The other change from the 2024 model on here is the very last item, which is the Wake County cost share for the fire station. So in last year's model, we were working under the assumption that Wake County would be cost-sharing at the rate that we were experiencing at the time, somewhere around 40%. We know it goes down about 2% or so every year, the cost share, because as the city expands, the rural area gets smaller. And so over time, the Wake County contribution, cost share for fire department operations is going to go down. So last year's model was assuming about a 40% participation. Since last year, the town of Wake Forest has put forth plans to build a fire station to the north of Roseville. It is likely that that station will be the first responder to some of those northern rural areas in Roseville. And so what we have done here is matched the Wake County financial model. They're assuming about a 30% cost share. And then the maximum contribution that they're putting in theirs is the $6 million. We're just putting that in as a placeholder, okay? So between the two, right? So one was a positive, we didn't have those net assets in there last year, so that's good. But our projections for the Wake County contribution were perhaps a little too high last year.
So you're saying they're going to change the boundaries, the fire boundaries?
I don't know to get into the specifics of that.
Because that means we serve in less people, which would bring our ratio down.
I just, from what I might, my understanding is that that station is going to have an impact on the cost share percentage. What goes behind that?
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of the.
Did you say when they're building that, Amy? Did you mention that?
I don't, I don't have a lot of the.
Okay, okay.
And remember with the Wake County cost share, and you have to help me here. Wake, and this is because they're protecting Wake County taxpayer funds, right? They don't want to join into the building of a building and start contributing money before they know it's going to get done, right? So they don't participate, they don't really come in to this project until we're about to get the CO on the building.
That's correct. And so what we're working on now, we'll start working on, is a reimbursement agreement. And so that kind of solidifies us tracking our expenses up to a certain point. And then when we get closer to that certificate of occupancy or moving in, at a certain completion point, I think it's like 80% or what have you, they will start reimbursing us for what we spent today. And we've strategically waited to, strategically delayed the start on certain parts of the project. So for instance, they've already agreed upon certain things related to the library. So starting with site development, doesn't put funding attached to the building in limbo. Because if we start working on certain things too far in advance, then it won't, they, before they adopt it into their budget, then they will say, we didn't agree on that when y'all started. And so it's a question mark as to whether or not they're quote, "on the hook", end quote, for reimbursing us for certain money. But we've done what we can to make sure we get reimbursed for as much as possible with that. But they will not start distributions until we get to a certain point. And they'll be partnering with us with the library and with the fire station with funding.
So let me ask a question. So whenever, when, when will we know what percent? I know this isn't best educated guess right here. When will we know what percent the cost share will be? And whenever we know that, does that lock us in or does that continue to decrease? It locks us in for that one project, is that correct? No matter how long it takes to complete it?
I would have to go back and look at my notes. So when we sign the agreement, there's an expected cost share percentage.
Yes.
But then I think we've heard verbally, within that agreement says it can't decrease more than like 5%.
Okay.
So there's a floor. When we sign the agreement, there is a floor.
Okay.
So where did the 30% come from?
It's just somebody else's crystal ball.
Because it's not 30, 70 now, it's like 48.
We're, it's 41.45 for the town right now.
But when will that, when will we know what percentage? Is that in two years, is that in three years? Is that, when would we know what percent that's going to be?
I think the cost share is updated annually, right?
Yeah, usually around January-ish, we update the cost share.
So will January's cost share be the one that we get? Because then we'll, when, what year, what determines what cost share? When we start the project, when we do what?
Let's get back to you on that one.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't know the accurate answer. Excellent question. I don't know.
Yeah, the biggest change is the permitting. When we build new houses, you know, we service in more people than they service. That's when that ratio comes down. So the faster we grow, the faster it comes down, you know?
That's why I want to know, when do we lock it in?
But that also, doesn't that raise the issue after unification of potentially like fire impact fees and what have you for our developments in the future?
If we have any, see, we don't have any.
Not now. But once unification happens, it could.
Yeah, we'd have to get a local B on approval, but yeah, we'll find, because I really, and I really don't understand where you said the projected maximum. Is that a maximum? They said it, and they're not going to attribute no more than six.
That's just what they had in their model. So just like we have a five-year model, they have a five-year model for all their fire stations.
And it's based on anticipated growth, not just of us, but us with respect to Wake Forest and their establishing their station as well to the north of us.
Okay, so it's just a plan and purpose, it's nothing, you know?
Exactly.
Whatever is at the time would be the thing.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you know.
It's somebody else's crystal ball.
The general thing that we do know is that their share, they're going to contribute less over time. It's not going to stay flat. And so that, the sentiment is, has been communicated to us that they will be contributing less over time, and it'll eventually level out because it'll, it'll, will never be 100% just because of how our lines are drawn in our ETJ in the rural community to the north of us. But their share is going to be going down.
That's why I was asking, when would we lock in? Because it seems like the sooner the better. But at what stage in the development do we have to be before we can lock in? That was my thinking, okay?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I know we've talked about it. You know, I don't, everybody here knows unbeliever the rule of seven. You have to hear and see things seven times before you really start to incorporate it. And I think I've heard the conversation once or twice. So I'm just, I'm not, I'm not certain of my answer, and I don't want to.
Okay.
I want to be certain, to give you the correct. Okay, all right, so that's the third component. The fourth component that goes into the model is the projects themselves. And so this is where I was talking about at the beginning, how this model, for tonight's discussion, right? The normal model, it'll have all the projects. But for tonight's discussion, what they have done is just done some scenarios for us, looking at the projects for FY '26 to FY '28 only, keeping everything else constant. So that includes the town campus site construction, the police station, the main fire station, we're going to come back to this one, that's why it's in brown, new town hall, and the activation of the farm park site. These costs have been updated. You heard the presentation from our architect from ADW last month. And so this, these costs have been updated with his updated costs based on where some of those projects are right now, with the exception of fire station. If you remember from our budget conversation, what's happening with that station is our 2024 model had a police station and a fire station, both with the cost of a 16,000 square foot building, okay? When it comes to a police station, they're coming in right around there, 16,000 to 17,000 square feet. So no issues with that from that standpoint. Where the architect is right now with designing and looking at what's needed for the fire station is they're at 24, almost 25,000 square feet. So it's a 50% larger building than what was included in this model last year. And so what we asked Davenport to do was, can you run a few scenarios for us, right? All of our assumptions have changed. We're taking a little bit of a different tack on things and based on our economic condition and everything. We're just updating everything. So given that, folks, Davenport, can you run for us some different models for different sizes and costs of fire stations? And so that's what the right-hand side of this screen is. It's, there are seven different scenarios, okay? Scenario one is essentially the 2024 16,000, 17,000 square foot station, okay? If you look at that, it's a $12.9 million building. Based on the update, with all the updates to the model, looking at revenues over the next 30 years, there is no shortfall in the town's ability to make debt payments. no shortfall in the town's ability to make debt payments on that building. No impact. If we look down here at the bottom, scenario seven, that is the cost of the, of about a 24, 25,000 square foot station. That's $18.3 million. It is a $5.4 million shortfall in the town's ability to make debt payments. Now, that's combined. I don't want you to think, because it has, if you see the years impacted, it's FY '32 to '38. That's not a $5 million shortfall each year. That's the sum of '32, '33, '34, seven years. Okay, so seven years with the shortfall of not being able to make debt payments under this model. And that totals, all of those years total to 5.4 million.
Amy, does that factor in the Wake County cost share?
Yes, this model includes, that's what, on our previous, that third component, this model includes any of the funding that comes, both what comes from the cash assets, from the fire department, as well as the money from the cost.
It does include those as well.
Yes.
And the tax impact.
Yep.
Scenario seven, that's 1.56. I'll just say that's two pennies short, is that what we're looking at there?
Yeah, and, and that's really just to kind of help you to gauge like the magnitude of what we're talking about. It would be worth of about one and a half cents in FY '29.
Right.
Right? So remember that value of a penny is going up 8% per year. So I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but where, what, it's whatever the value of the penny is in FY '29 for one and a half cents. So anyway, that offers the seven different scenarios ranging from the 12.9 to the 18.2. And for all these, you can see, there's this total shortfall. How much is that shortfall each year? So again, a lot of what goes into this model is assumptions. We're guessing. Things could turn out more rosy. Things could turn out less rosy, particularly if we have an economic downturn. So this is what we wanted to present to you so that you could absorb for a little bit, think about where your comfort level is in terms of these scenarios, in terms of what approach you want to take, in terms of making some of these final decisions on this model for the next year.
And so, yeah, and so at the, at the budget retreat, when they, when ADW presented the floor plan of the building and the potential schematic of the fire station, we had, we told you all that it came in larger as far as needs and that there's an opportunity to, to add on to it later. And we talked through that briefly, but we just wanted to make sure we brought the actual data back in front of you because at that point in time, Davenport had completed their forecasting that kind of goes into our budget with all the, all the information that's necessary. And so this is, this is the place that we are and the decision that we need to make with regards to that.
So have we landed at 18, 18,000 square feet?
Eighteen, eighteen million.
16,000 square feet.
No, it's 18 mil, it's 18 million. The, so the initial, the initial amount came back around 28,000 square feet and then they turned it back to 24,000 square feet. A 24,000 square foot building is 18.25 million dollars.
But that, that, I think that building is, we're on pause, we're still in conversation.
Right, we haven't.
What's the appropriate size of that building? There's no design work or.
Because we, we have to follow the money that's available. We can't, yeah. And so when we did initial CIP model, it had the 12, had that 12.9 million dollars in it. That's when we, the, the pennies that we retained during the revaluation and when we funded it. And we are not, we can't buy something bigger than what we've agreed to fund.
When would they land, when would they land on a size? Do they have a date?
So we're waiting on the money discussion to do the size discussion. The size is, the size, we can always, the size of the building comes down to how much money there is. And we're coming back to you because the amount of money that was approved, that was taken into account when we made, when we funded the CIP is 12.9 million.
So let me ask this question. So we had that discussion, how many bays is that one? I don't even know.
Five.
Five bays.
They're double bays, I think, and even.
So do we still need that much? I gotta think this through. Wake County, Wake Forest is building one right there, right? So, but we still have to assist, right? Because the number of people is still are growing, so we would still need five bays.
Yeah, I think it's more, I, I'm not sure what to ask him for, but she's saying, is it more than five bays that they're asking?
So there are five bays, that's correct. There's four, there's, there's four and a half, right? There's a single double sided base.
So my thought process was if Wake Forest is building one right there, do we still need the five bays? But then my thought process is also, we're still growing, everybody else is still growing and we will still have to make calls and assist with calls. So we probably still need the five bays.
Yes.
We will really probably need more.
I think the equipment they have too is already at five bay. They have equipment that they don't even keep, they have equipment that they don't even keep in the current building.
Yeah.
So, and that right there will put us automatically at those bays. So I guess.
So I think to answer that too, is, you know, one of the things we talked about is becoming more data-driven. It's finding about information, about the data, about the usage of all the equipment. How often is it used? You know, do we have the right equipment?
Is, is that begging the question, do we need this much? Or do we need more? Is that what the data is trying to, you're trying to prove that as well? Okay.
So need is. Need has different perspectives, you know? And so the data on a space need then versus if we retain everything that we have now, there, I don't.
I think that needs to be explored a little bit more.
It comes down to utilization of certain things.
Exactly. And just because we have it, doesn't mean that we have to house it right now.
That's correct. And we talked about that at the budget retreat when we talked through the ones that, because based on data, Wake County partners to purchase certain apparatus based on data, right? And there are certain things that they consider for us to have, consider that we have that are above and beyond, that are required for data. And we don't have the slide, but there was a slide where certain things were green, some things were gray, certain things were dark, dark, dark black, and other things was a gray. And, and so those are the things that Wake County is looking at when it comes to their cost share. And so when we talk about data, that's where that we look at.
So don't we need that before we make some decisions?
I don't know. I mean, I kind of hear, you know, I, I was kind of thinking, they determine the size and then we make a decision on what the financial piece would be. But I think what we're saying now is we, we determine the financial piece and then they will make the size work. So what do we, which?
Well, so I think it comes down, so here's your options, right?
You want us to pick one of these sizes?
Well, no, just things for, to think about, right? So you either new revenues, right? We know if you go with the, the size of the building that they're talking about now, there's a shortfall in revenues, a $5 million shortfall in revenues. So it means either bringing in new revenues.
Right.
Or it means reducing expenditures. And so that's either adjusting the projects that are part of this model or adjusting building sizes. Kind of, which, the last two are sort of the same thing, it's just two different aspects of it.
We, we make, we make a get permission to use the water impact fees, which is, will close up the shortfall some, for sure. And that's just sitting there, we're not using it for anything, don't have any plan to use it for. I mean, that could be an option, hmm?
So the.
How much is in there now?
So the authorizing legislation to collect those fees.
Yeah, we'd have to get a local bill to do.
Says that it is for water treatment and wastewater treatment.
See, we'll never use it for that.
It's not, it's not distribution of water, so that one. I know, because I've had this conversation.
What, what is it? One point, point, one point, what, two?
It's about 1.9 because of all the interest.
1.9, 2 million dollars. And it's just sitting there, we, we can't use it for anything.
Now, I will say, we have talked about using that out at the farm project because there will have to be a sewer system and a well system out there, which could qualify under treatment.
I don't think it'd be 2 million dollars.
But at least some of that money can still go to the farm, and some can still go to this, to the fire.
Yeah, frees up other funds for this.
Yeah, 2, 2 million dollars would get you to scenario four.
Yep. But what, what we're not, what we haven't taken into account is legislative action in the model. And so that will require legislation. And the, and the need to move forward is more urgent with that than that.
So, and I know, because this is a lot to take in. But I think what we're, we're looking for, maybe not tonight, but soon, as we go into the budget, is where, where is the board's feeling on it? Do you want us to go back to Davenport and say, this is the building, the one we've been talking about, and help us figure out what we need to do to get the revenues where they need to be? Because, because this analysis is part of the presentation to the LGD, is what.
Yes.
I don't know how a shortfall in the model would play.
With the debt funding, with getting the debt funded.
I mean, that's a, that's a Davenport question we'll have to deal with. But I think what we're, Erica, are looking for is what's the direction of the board? Do you want us to find, to go with the, the scenario seven and then figure out how the funding works around that? Or do we continue exploring options for other arrangements of the facility?
If we, if we went with that one, do you, do you have like in mind what it might affect anyways? I mean, is it going to affect? I mean, is it going to push out town hall more? Is that going to, is that going to mess with farm activation? I mean, do you have an idea of what you're looking at ahead of time?
So that, that's why I mentioned at the beginning, this is, we call it a five-year model, but it's a 30-year model of maxing out the revenue. And so if you do talk about adjusting projects and moving them around, you know, a two-year delay doesn't really help. Now, once you get over the hump, right? When you start getting into where you're paying off the debt for these projects, police station, fire station, then you're getting back into that place where you can take on new debt. But there we're looking at, you know, 36, 37, 38, in terms of a time period. So you're looking at 10 years from now.
I don't know. I don't, I don't think we just say we'll go with numbers, scenario seven, if we can make scenario four work. We can, you know, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, we shoot for scenario four and then we'll decide what's the option going to make it work, you know? And one of the options is to get that legislative approval.
Yes.
Which will close the gap up completely on four. I'm kind of uncomfortable going with seven if it's more than we need to go, you know?
That's, that's my concern. If, if we have overage and we have too much that we don't need, then why are we housing it? And why are we paying for it right now? And number four, what, how many square feet does number four get us? I don't see that on there.
It's in the 19, 19 to 20,000 square feet.
18?
19 to 20,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's about 20.
Let's say 20.
So it's like, let's right in the middle.
19, eight, what was the original, 18?
16, 17.
The original was 16.
16?
But that's too small.
So scenario one is 16?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, about 17.5.
17.5.
Okay. And scenario four is what?
19.
I got 20,000, nine.
Got 20,000? 20K.
And seven is 24 to 25, so they said.
Is 24.6.
Yeah, I would challenge a 20K building. If it don't, they would come back to us and say that's, it's just not going to work, you know?
Hey, you, you said 17.5 is not going to work. So the data is showing that 17.5 is not going to work? If I understood you correctly, 17.5 was too small.
The, no, it's not showing that it won't work. And so, yeah, to answer your question.
Yes, the data, yes, it's too small, that, no, the data doesn't show. I just want to make sure, because I'm slow, so.
So when we, when you do a survey, is, the, the survey that was completed with both the fire station and police department was based off information they provided, right? To me, when we looked at certain things, it's really depending on, do you want to build onto a building later, add onto a building later? And so when you think about adding onto a building later, it is enough. When you think about wanting to do it all now and not wanting to come back to it 10 years from now, then 16,000 would be too small.
Okay.
Or the, the 12 million would be too small. But looking at the future expansion of other places in the area, I do, I think, if you ask in my opinion, that landing around this scenario three, four would be less likely to have to add onto a building later. But the police department was also built knowing that it would expand later. And so that's why their building passes now, is that the purpose of expansion at a later time. And so that's why the, the need is relative and I'm like, slow to speak.
But they determined that 17.5 is too small already, right? That's not going to work. Is that a true statement? The team that's working on this, they come up much bigger than that, right?
Based off the survey, yeah, but the survey is based off what we might need eventually, if that makes sense.
Eventually.
It's without putting a budget on it, it's just.
Yeah.
It defines what do you want?
That is correct. That's correct.
Yeah. Of course, the second thing, guys, you know, if, if we can get legislative approval for the impact fees, then we can, we can, I mean, you have future, we can put future impact fees on there. So that changes the whole model if you get an impact fees for, you know, for fire, like Wake Forest, that changes the whole, the whole.
It does.
Model, right?
Absolutely.
I mean. So, you know.
Can we explore that?
We can explore, but again, like when it comes to making the decision, there's something we need to move on sooner or later. And I, I'm always hesitant to spend tomorrow's money today.
Yeah, I think for tonight, we, unless somebody disagrees, we'll just say, you know, let's shoot for scenario four, do we know better data? I see Amy nodding.
Oh, just acknowledging you.
Yeah, we, you know, shoot for scenario four and then, and then that's 58 cents or a 2, 2,000, 2 million dollar gap. And if they land on four, if they land on more than four, then that's, that's going to be even a bigger discussion on how we fund that. But it has to be in this year's budget? Is that what you're saying?
So the thing that needs, that needs to be decided is the architect has already started on designing the police station because that's good. They were hoping to be able to do both buildings at the same time. And it's still time, they still have time to catch up, but.
But we got, we got a lot of money in the budget for the, for a certain size, you know, right? Already.
Yes.
But what I'm asking is, if, I, I know, you know, if I know what Davenport is doing, if we make a decision not to change the budget based on what is finally realized, it's just going to be more impact in the future, right? It's just on cost, you know? We're not going to get that one year of impact, I mean, that one year of funds coming in into the plan, I think. Because we won't be spending this money next. 'Cause we won't be spending this money next year, not twenty-eight, not, not twenty million dollars.
No, but it's, it's a long-term commitment.
But the debt funding, the debt service will be something that will happen next year, though.
Yeah, 'cause we're committing to whatever size we commit to. And that's over the entire term, which is what we'll.
That's correct.
Yeah, if we say today, we're going for the twenty-four thousand square foot building, we're locked in for the debt that's gonna go with it.
That's correct.
That's the issue. And that's what, because they're designing it now, they need to know what we're willing to pay for.
Yeah, I think it's hard for us to make decisions without knowing the size. And we can make decisions, take some actions to be ready to make a, you know, decision like, maybe shoot for number four or something as a guideline and.
Knowing that it could be expanded later.
Yeah.
When the growth has slowed down some, but we still have all that other. But then also we also take into consideration the Wake County cost share.
So what, what, what I'm hearing then, in next year, we're gonna take a loan for ten million dollar site, twelve million dollar police station, thirteen million dollar police station, and a loan for the fire department, whatever that is. That's gonna be in next, the loans actually be issued in, in next year.
That's correct. The way it works with the construction manager at risk, um, you're getting that loan there at the, when you get that minimum, that, um, guaranteed minimum price.
So is the loan like a construction loan where you draw from it? Or is it like, they give you the whole ten million dollars of the site and then you pay in interest on it the whole time?
I'm not sure, because Davenport has talked about, because it's such a large amount, of doing something a little different than we did, for example, like with the Public Works Building. So the way the Public Works Building worked is, they opened an account for us, put the money in there. As we spent on the project, I could get, I could submit for reimbursements from the loan. So you had to show substantial progress on the project to be able to get your distributions. But the town was immediately liable for that full loan amount.
Right.
And expected to make.
But you only paid interest on what you withdrew.
Mm-mm, the whole thing.
Whole thing.
It wasn't a line of credit.
Who were responsible for the whole thing.
It was a loan. And the first payment was due one year from the first, from the day of.
I would, I would say, if it was a loan that, I, I don't, if we was paying interest on it as a loan, I'm not sure why we were getting.
Reimbursed.
Yeah, I mean, they should've gave us the whole thing of money.
Well, they did, it was in our name, they just controlled to make sure you're using it on appropriate expenditures. But it's truly going for the construction of the building. Because sometimes I submitted some things and they'd have questions back, well, this is four, this seems operational. And I reply back honestly. So more, more conversation to be had, I'm sorry we started out on such a hard topic. But, um, but, I mean, this is the reality. Um, and so I think we have some idea of which way y'all are going, but obviously, we all need to have more conversation about this. I think it'd be good to get some more data from the fire department, um, have some more conversations with them or with the architect, as well as.
You, you mentioned, we need to act quickly. Is there a timeline that you have in mind that you would like to see us try to execute by realistically?
Yeah, the budget's gotta be done pretty quick.
Yeah, we need, I mean, we need it, we're trying to settle the budget with regards to the progress of the buildings. Ensuring that they're in construction at the same time is a very big deal, considering a lot of the things that are going on and the kind of economy-wise. We don't know if steel prices will go up, um, availability of certain things will be impacted. And so those are just things that we have to think about. A, a big part of the buildings being the prices they are was that we got it to a place where they will be working on them both at the same time. And so when it comes to materials, all those different things, take into account. And so the hope is that we can still stay as close as possible to it. And, um, the more that those buildings are spaced out, the more we kind of open ourselves up to, um, trending costs, like something running to another year, what have you. Because things just naturally get more expensive as you build. We wanna keep it streamlined as possible. So to answer your question, sooner the better. Is it like dire, direly urgent? No. Can we afford to have another conversation about it? Yes. But we're trying to, this is just one piece of the bigger budgetary picture that we're putting together right now.
This is gonna come off way wrong, so I just wanna put that in advance. But, um, with the, the fire department coming on to the town as, you know, as a partner, I just feel like we need to make sure we're going needs versus wants, and making sure we're spending the money the right way on things we need versus the things that they might want. And that's what I worry about with the building, you know, yeah, everybody's gonna love a eighteen million dollar building that has all the bells and whistles and high tech and this and that and everything else. But do we need all that stuff right now? I just, I just wanna make sure we're, we can cover just as, what we can do, you know, right now in the future, but at the same time, just don't go way overboard. Because I don't, things are gonna change, you know, um, the town is gonna change. And you, you know, I mean, ten years down the road, we'll be talking, you know, we need a station here, a station there and everything else. And we spent all this money, this one spot, and they can't get out now because there's an issue with traffic or something this way or that way. And I, I just wanna make sure, it'd be a different thing if they were building it themselves versus them being a part of the town now. And we have to be kind of conscious of, you know, the tax money and everything else and make sure we're spending it the right way, so I would just ask that we do that.
I agree, and I'm all for expansion, it, ten, fifteen years down the road. Just saying that, I don't.
Yeah, this, this building is not gonna be expanding, I think, I think.
If it were scenario seven, it would be maxed out, right? Space would be maxed out if it were seven. But four leaves room for expansion. Down the road.
The expanding will, the expansion will happen with the addition of bays.
Yes.
Because when, as you increase your footprint as a town, then you'll, um, there'll be a need for more apparatus.
Right.
We're having. The administrative space and that will likely be built to a place to where it might have some things that extend over to the second level, but that'll largely be the same because there'll just be more shifts. I mean, you might see a training room, a large training room increase. But it's, it'll really be, the bays are what add the most square footage to it. And so it'll likely come in, if I would say, if it were to be expanded, a bigger percentage of that expansion, um, square footage will be in actual bay and not administrative space. The ratio between bay and administrative space will be, you know, a certain amount. And I can get an answer from ADW about it, but that's generally what happens.
You know, thoughts, comments?
That could work.
You'd like four? I, I, I would say, you know, direct them to go for thousands, uh, two, twenty thousand square foot building at six, sixteen, fifteen million dollars. And maybe you can start planning for that between you and Davenport. You can figure, is it really fifty-eight cents or whatever, um, point fifty-eight cents?
Can I just ask one more question? And I kinda hate to ask this question, but I feel like I need to. On that list from Wake County with some things in black and some things in gray or whatever you said about, I guess that was the need? Something to think about, you don't have to answer it. Were any of the larger vehicles that would fit in those bays on that blacklist? You don't have to answer it. But that's just something that I would like to know, because then that would help me to understand the need for all the bays, okay?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does make sense, if you can. I, I think, I think the sooner the better, if you can get, um, was it AW, what, A?
ADW.
ADW to come in and do a presentation on the fire building like they did for the police building. I think, and I don't know when you can do that, but as soon as you can do that, I think that'll answer April's questions and we'll be able to directly answer, talk to him.
So the, the presentation that ADW did on the police building, they did, they could do that because we decided on the square footage of it. And so their options, all the options they presented, fit into the, fit into something that will be, um, at, at the estimated cost of twelve-nine, thirty-eight.
Yeah.
And so once we get that, it'll be, because certain things, particularly when we look at elevations, I mean, visual elevations, it changes. How many, how many bay doors you see and all that kind of stuff. But it'll be similar, but they, they are always hesitant to do a presentation that puts out a, a concept that won't look as closely to, um, as possible.
That'd be the thing, dude, and then twenty may not work. I mean, that may be, you know, we can.
What do we need?
Yeah.
Based on what that list from Wake County overage is that we don't need and all that stuff? Cross that stuff off, what, how many bays does that leave us?
Okay, I'll look into it.
Okay, I think that's a good starting place. And, and is that number four now? Or is that need of Wake County's looking out ten years? Or not? Because if not, then that's something that we need to also take into consideration. Ten, fifteen, whatever you guys, you know, we all decide on. But I think for me, that would make sense in my brain. What is a definite need right now? And how long do those numbers look? How far out do those numbers look?
You got, you got what you need?
Yes, sir.
I, I guess the only thing from the board, and it really not impacting this as much, but I, I think, I think we do need to make a decision on the fire department impact fees. Do we, do the board wanna move in the direction of getting that through the legislature or not? I mean, maybe I'll just ask Michael Paul to start with. What do you think about impact fees for, should we move in the direction? Now we wanna get the fire department in July, should we move in the direction of getting, having impact?
I think we'd be remiss not to. So yes.
Yes, but I have a question. So what does that look like?
Right.
It, it's, it'd be similar, it'd be similar to, you know, we, every, every new house for a park, for a, uh, a, a, um, every new house has to give so much to a park fee, so much for transportation fees. And it used to be for water and sewer, but we don't do the water and sewer anymore. But now it can be for fire department.
Okay, yes.
That's what they do in Wake Forest. Every house in Wake Forest is built, is some impact fees go to the fire, to build fire station.
I think absolutely, yes.
So I guess my other question is, or two questions, uh, it only affects new builds, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then what happens when you don't have any more new builds?
We don't have impact fees, so you can't expand.
Yeah, I mean, I still think you're gonna.
And it only can be used for capital projects.
Yeah.
So, you know, you, you just wouldn't be able to build any, and if you're, if you're not growing, you don't really need to be building stuff, you know?
Because we're running out of space.
I'm not, I don't even think it can be used to replace the vehicles, can it?
I, I will, Mr. Mayor, it says fire impact fees are also known as development impacts and one-time charges levied on new developments to help cover the cost of expanded fire protection and emergency medical services needed to accommodate growth, which is also inclusive of major equipment purchases.
It does, the fire trucks and stuff like.
So I think, I, I always try to offer a perspective. I have asked people about this, and I'm been hesitant to mention it. And so similar to something that we're seeing with Garner asking, um, a bill that is limiting expansion of the ETJ, um, that's targeting Garner, that was spurred off of a situation in Durham County that has kind of trickled over into Wake County. The last time that someone, um, tried to get fire fees through legislative, they looked at removing fees, removing them from the current person, people that only get it, which is Wake Forest, rather than make it to where everybody can get them. And so in bringing a piece of policy forward, it could go the other way as well.
You said Wake Forest is the only municipality that has fire impact?
To my knowledge, the only one in the area, particularly in Wake County, is Wake, Wake Forest. And the last time that came forward, they, they looked to take away Wake Forest's fees instead of giving everybody, you know, every, instead of opening the door for more fees to be levied.
Yeah, I think.
But it depends on the timing, depends on who's up there and all that kind of stuff. But those are just things that, I would be remiss if I didn't offer the other perspective, which, again, that's why I kind of, just kind of summed it up, is I don't try to spend tomorrow's money today.
Yeah. I, I think, I think we would, we would, um, we would look at the room first and find out what the perspective is across the board before we push anything on them. You know, we wouldn't try to push it on them for sure. I do, I do agree with you somewhat that they are looking negatively, but we're not, we wouldn't be asking for anything addition. We'd be removing water, sewer, and converting it to fire. And, you know, it's not like you're asking for anything more. You're just asking to change something that you don't use anymore. So some, sometime it has to do in, in the, how you present it. And, uh, and I do, you know, I think we already got some people there that supports it, so, you know.
There might be other towns that would support it as well, so it wouldn't be just us asking.
It, it, it wouldn't be towns that matter, it's the, um, it's the representatives and senators.
Yeah.
We wouldn't push it on them.
I like the way Ronnie put it. We're just moving from one bucket to another, from sewer and water to fire. But then does that set a precedent for someone else to come and ask as well?
And I think other towns is asking too, so, you know, that's where, that's where, you know. I think we can do in a way not upset them, you know? It's a lot of towns doing things to upset them, and that's kind of what, you know? We could lose it all and not do anything very easily by somebody else upsetting them.
But it doesn't hurt to ask.
So did you make, did you, did you add your perspective, Lynn?
I have my agreeance with the fees now that I have clarity.
Do what now?
I, I, yes.
You do? And Paul, did you come?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, we'll say yes for now. I just wanna see how it impacts, survey, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know.
Thanks, Amy.
Nice job, Amy, thank you.
Way to stir it up, Amy.
You can take the bay, you take a, a bay out. You ready to go? I'm ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
Switching gears to, um, our affordable housing project, uh, or potential project idea for the town-owned property behind us here. We had talked about this at the February board meeting, um, and I think there was a desire for more information. So in your packets tonight, you'll see that information. There's a comparison chart and some narrative, um, just to give some history or some background leading to where we got to today. Back in about six months ago now, we, we put out this RFP, well, even further back, so just for everybody in the room. So this, you know, we were trying to figure out, you know, the town was, a couple of years ago, we had this property, six and a half acres. You know, is there anything we wanna do with it, anything we wanna see here? We put it out there, uh, on the market to see if we'd get any takers. Didn't really get any offers that interested, uh, the town at the time. And, um, so took it off the market. And I think about a year ago, as we started talking more about, uh, affordable housing and doing an affordable housing plan, um, you know, the, the, the town board said, well, what if we, you know, there's some interest in maybe, you know, seeing if we could do an affordable housing project here, um, with town-owned property. So, and RFP went out, um, back in September, October. And, um, we received, uh, seven proposals, seven responses, um, to that RFP. And that's, the, the RFP itself is also in your packet. And the, we set up a, a team to review those requests for proposal. And you can see the team members there, about eleven of us participated on that team. And, um, as I mentioned last time, um, the, the, the recommendation, um, from that committee, after looking at all the proposals, after, uh, asking the, the, some follow-up questions of the, of the organizations and inviting some of those organizations for, um, virtual interviews. They, um, collectively decided on recommending habitat, to work, the town to work with Habitat for Humanity as kind of their first choice with, um, True Homes, uh, the True Homes organization kind of coming in a close second. And so. And so I think staff is just looking for further guidance tonight. If the board is in favor of pursuing communications with the selected entity, if the board wants to put this project on pause, if the board wants to go in a different direction. So we're just kind of seeking guidance and wanted to get your thoughts and feelings on, on a direction forward to think about an affordable housing project here on this property.
Okay, all righty. Is, um, number one, Habitat.
Yes.
Are they fits on 20?
No, they had, they actually presented two different options. One was with 16 cottage-style townhomes and the other was 20. And they, they mentioned how they were open to communication with the, with the, with the town. And the, the top two entities did kind of mention, like, there's a lot of flexibility. So this is just the very beginning. You start to have conversations, a lot of back and forth. The town gets to say, hey, well, we, we want this style of townhome, or we don't like this, or we'd like this density and, or such and such. And it could be that you, you work with a partner and you get six months down the road and you decide, hey, maybe it's not going to work out. And so you just kind of have those conversations until the town is very, very comfortable in what they're getting. You know, it's, the town owns the land, so you want to make sure that, you know, it's, it's a valuable piece of land and you want to make sure you're getting what you, you want out of it. So, um, so, but anyway, they, they did mention some flexibility there. And again, they, they'd have to look at their financial model, depending on what the town wants, and maybe some stuff doesn't, doesn't quite work out, but maybe other things do.
Which leads to my second question for number two. I like their quantity, but I'm also looking at the level of pricing and affordability. Are they willing to have some homes in the 50 to 60% AMI to accommodate disabled veterans and also our senior population?
They also expressed the ability to be flexible. That's a question we can ask if we get further down the road, if we, or if we want to. I can't recall specifically if they, if they mentioned that.
Those are my two things. Because with Habitat, I've seen their work, so if they're willing to increase the numbers some. But you said they only had those two models, but as far as in true, they have numbers, but I think they should have some of the 50 to 60 AMI in there.
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
Sorry. I was asking, I was asking Michael a question, but Habitat seemed flexible. I think they are at a place where they're, are open to doing something different. And so doing more, for lack of better words, more, well, I was about to say the, the D-word, density, but we don't like the word density. Doing more, doing more homes and creating more opportunities, I think they wouldn't be opposed to that. They just, based off what they saw through their questions with us, their follow-up questions, and how we weren't trying to like pack a whole bunch of apartments and like pack a, a whole bunch of homes in there, they, they made their, their span between 16 to 20 off that. So they will likely be open to that.
And assuming this style is shown in the preliminary sketches dictates the, the number of homes they can get into the area. So if we were with the cottage style, it would be the, the larger of the, of the offering. So it would limit the number if we went with that, that particular style, correct?
Yeah, but see, I like that cottage style look.
I do too.
I mean, I just, I, I feel like if you're trying to do something right and you do it right, I, I just, townhomes, I know, I know the cost points and the, you know, this and that and everything else, but just, I don't know, just of us trying to do something special, I feel like that's just a better look, yeah, I mean.
Could they increase the number of cottages? I'm, I'm just curious. I mean, we increased the density, what would, do we know what that number would look like with the cottage style?
Yeah, well, definitely a question we could ask and a conversation to have to see if there's a desire to want more of those.
So, Michael, first, thank you for putting this together. And you spearheaded this thing. I think I was at least one of the instigators to get this thing going about a year ago, looking for senior affordable housing largely because we don't have it and with the problems we've had at the Grande. And I know the, the third option, which we haven't talked about yet, is the Hurt Foundation. And I just want to dispel some of the, the inaccuracies that are in here because, you know, I, I talked to Michael Hurt over the weekend and he said, I don't know how more clear I can be that it's a purchase, not a rental, and yet we're still calling it a rental. So I just wanted to not belabor this, but just explain that the, the approach is a little bit novel in the sense that, yes, the owner buys it, but when they permanently move out of the, the structure, it reverts back to the developer, so the developer can provide it again to the next generation, the next owner, at the same price. So, you know, that is novel in the sense that of the three, that's the only one where it keeps it at the same price over the, the life of the building, not the life of the owner. Whereas Habitat is up to 15 years and then it goes to market. True Homes is seven to 15 years and then it goes to market price. This, that was the one where it stays the same. And, and the other thing I'll mention is, I understand, we looked at the Hurt Foundation, said, well, it's fairly new. It was created by Hurt LLC for this presentation to show that they truly meant it, what they said, and that the Hurt Foundation is a nonprofit. Hurt LLC has been in business for over 20 years and has built hundreds of apartments and many multifamily complexes from the ground up. So they do have a lot of experience and in this specific area. But the Hurt Foundation itself, no, because it's a new entity backed by a very well-seasoned local builder developer. And it's purely senior housing, which we definitely need. We have many residents in our town that are aging out of, or aging into retirement that are going to be on fixed incomes and they, not all of them can afford to stay in, in our neighborhood, our town. They are our residents and we saw what happened with the Grande when they raised the rents, that we had a lot of people move out and not just move out of the Grande, but move out of the county because there aren't any places for them to live. And that's why we were looking at a senior affordable housing complex. And that made the most sense to me because it is on Main Street. We just shut down a, an apartment complex because it was on Main Street because of the traffic impact and seniors have a much less traffic impact than, than anyone else. So, thank you.
I think you, great summary of, of all the information that we had, so I really do appreciate that. So as it stands right now, you're looking for who? I mean, I think it was decided upon by the group Habitat for Humanities first and then True Homes second. So are you, what are you looking for from us tonight?
I think if that sounds okay, accepting the recommendation and then that would direct staff to go ahead and begin conversations with Habitat.
Yes.
We'd have to see what that looks like and maybe they, they come here and talk with the board and we have some visioning sessions and, and try to work on what we all want to see, what the town would like to see there on the site. And so it's kind of just beginning, beginning those talks and at some point there might need to be an MOU or something. And again, and again, they said they're flexible too. They understand that, you know, sometimes it doesn't work out or we might, the, the town might like something or want something and then Habitat could say, well, we can't quite do that, you know. Back to the density, you know, maybe, maybe we can't quite do 30 or, or, but, but we have those conversations, I think. So then, so I guess guidance to go forth and do that, but then also maybe some guidance on how much the board would want to be involved in that, or let staff lead and, like, refer to Eric too, you know?
And so those, 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 that would be the ask. And so again, we recognize this be a conversation and want to bring, um, start with that, with those recommendations from that, for lack of a better word, steering committee that we had put together or assembled and start the conversation with Habitat. We hear what you're saying about the need for more density and then, but those, all those things can be, we can communicate or ask, ask them to watch this video to hear those things and so they could take those things into account when they come in. But then also, y'all can brainstorm about what are the things you'd like to see in that, to kind of bring it more closely to things that would align both with you all, with, with what you all are desiring. As staff, we, you know, we, we have leaned heavily into what the community is saying and then also looking at options that don't impact certain things that you all brought up, like traffic and, and the concerns of the neighboring community. And so we felt like those first two ones fell into that. Fell into, you know, you all's expressed comfort from just listening to you all as you've reviewed several different plans and applications that have come before you. And also, we are also looking at it too, just to touch on some of the, the nonprofit kind of program and like the longevity we would see and just the impacts on having a manager program when it comes to like transfer of ownership and stuff like that. And so that's one thing that from a staff perspective with staff capacity and not wanting to have to stand up an affordable housing program that stood out with, particularly with Habitat, with their pre, pre-existing relationships and the tenure, the longevity of the program they have with Trent and it not being something that we have to do to make sure it moves to the next person and all that kind of stuff. But as far as recommendations, if there were to be one, we just ask your permission to kind of bring in Habitat to start that journey forward, just that conversation. So that you can discover if they are a good fit and we can move on to the next one, if not. But just to have those more conversations to answer your question.
I think one of the other things that is so attractive about Habitat for Humanity for us is that they are experienced in Wake County and know how to get funding in Wake County. The, the organizations to go to, I think that is a plus in the plus column for them as well.
Yeah. And a big part of the driver is labor.
Yep.
And volunteerism, and so we're not outside of their hub. And so that's how, one of the main drivers in their affordability is that the homeowners contribute to it. And, and with proximity to the town hall, we have a volunteerism program. And do we commit people to that or partner with other organizations to lend labor to that as well and to help drive down costs and so, yeah.
I still want to say I'm curious about the, the Hurt Foundation and that reselling at original price. Like, I know that's just one thing out of everything, but that is a, does stand out. I'm just curious, like, Habitat's thing, I mean, I know they have a set way they do things or anything else, but are they flexible on their way they do it? Or is it just, this is the way we do it no matter what?
Those are questions we can ask them.
Yeah, and there are two, they, they haven't done this yet, but they talked about this, um, was it the land trust?
Yes.
Model. So there are, they got two kind of ways. And I'm speaking above my pay grade too, land trust model and deed restriction model. Where, yeah, does the town provide a partner, a, a ground lease for 99 years or something? And, and again, we can learn more about that and have that conversation. I think something that came up with the Hurt Foundation, the way, and like, again, I'm speaking maybe above my pay grade. If I recall, the way Wake County interpreted it is you're, you're, the owner, the owner, somebody lives there and then let's say 10 years later, they leave or they sell the house, they don't get to profit from the sale in, in any way. So that's why it was kind of this quasi-rental model. So these other models, you're, you live there for five years, you sell it and you get the profit, oh, the house went up by $100,000. You get the profit and take that. With the Hurt Foundation model, to what, to our, to the group's understanding and how it was explained to the group was that there was no profit experienced by the owner renter after they left or decided to sell.
And, and Michael, that's correct, and the whole point was to keep the price down for the next generation.
Right.
But while they owned it, they had the full benefit of, you know, writing off taxes, insurance, interest, all that stuff. So it, it, it is a slightly different model intended to be affordable housing. And that's, you know, it's a shame that it was taken as a negative, but that's why it was done that way.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, and hopefully this is maybe the first of, of many that, you know, this just kind of is, is, you know, something for us to start off on, but over time is, is, you know, affordable housing.
Land that we still have left, we know that this can't happen.
Right.
What, what do you mean it can't happen? Yeah. They haven't, none of them have done any extensive surveying of the rock and all that kind of stuff, so.
That was a question I asked. Did you do your?
Due diligence.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think what you're saying, the plan may be good, but while it can physically happen or not, you know, maybe a lot more cost involved than what everybody's planning on. You have to figure that out.
It's not ideal topography or consistency with the rock, definitely.
It looks good on paper.
So again, you're looking for?
I think we have, I think we have the recommendation.
Okay.
From, so I'm interpreting, if I'm hearing you all correctly, you want to initiate conversations with Habitat for Humanity and you can all can bring those questions to them and you can also bring the things that you like about other, that you saw in other applicants to see how close they can come on that with feasibility as well. But again, it's a conversation and we just, for the sake of just momentum, the momentum we have, we want to just continue having that with those, the candidates rose to the top.
Sounds good to me.
Cool.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Murdith. You stand between us and being adjourned, so. No pressure, no pressure at all.
Us and being adjourned.
Oh, well, me put my pajamas on.
Like, like Chris Rock and Dave Chappelle, you're the closer. So best for last.
So that's a good thing, Murdith, because it's in your hands now.
Well, I'll start talking. I'll wait and hopefully this thing, okay, it's going to be happy. I'm waiting for the dongle to be happy, but I will go ahead and start talking. We had two new rezoning cases submitted towards the end of 2024. The first one is REC 2404. It's 6520 Fowler Road and 6521 Mitchell Mill Road. The applicant is Hopper Communities. I'm going to try one more time with the dongle. I'm going to try a different one. Some of them don't like me. So if you have your packet in front of you with the report, so you're looking at the first one, REC 2404, you can see the two pieces of property shaded in and with that drawing north is on the left. If you turn it up, about the first property or the top property touches Fowler Road and then it connects to the other piece of property that touches Mitchell Mill Road. And the existing zoning is residential 30 in Wake County. And the proposed zoning is Hunter Oldsville Residential High. The future land designation is Edmond Betsy Residential. We're looking at just nearly 45 and a half acres and the proposed use is 100 single-family detached units. That would be a density of 2.2 units per acre. And one item of note, staff did tell the applicant to please start their presentation when they come to you with the story of why they're asking for residential high for a single-family detached neighborhood. And the belief there is they're asking for it due to the buy right lot size in residential high for single-family detached housing in residential high, you can have a 7,500 square foot lot. And.
Wait, say that again. You have a 7,500 square foot lot?
Yes, buy right. Like in residential medium, the buy right lot size is 15,000 and under the last business meeting, you all approved a text amendment to allow some varying lot sizes for cluster development. So in residential high, you can do a 7,500 square foot lot. So in residential high, you can do a 7,500 square foot lot by right without having to do any cluster or the conservation of the 40% open space. All right, I'm going to try one more dongle, maybe it'll like me, more fun with pictures. But not with this one, Residential Communities, they've done a lot of business in Roseville, so we're familiar with them. I think I might be able to get this to work. I'm trying. Yay. Okay, now we get to see a picture. We've been through this one, any comments on this site? Expect it to be on your agenda at your June business meeting.
Okay.
Not, I'll move on to the next one, we can get closer to adjournment. Now the screen is frozen, I can't move to the next one, that's very exciting.
Hey, Meredith, do we have any requirements they have to connect to the Greenway?
I don't know the Greenway plan off the top of my head, if it does show a Greenway here or Greenways connected, I would think yes, because this backs up to Broadmoor and depends on if there is a multi-use path along the road as well. So they would have to follow any Greenway requirements in our Greenway plan.
I mean, I know they had to do a boardwalk or something, but.
Yeah, advisory committees looked at this already too, we put a recommendation in. Well, we, I'm not part of it, they did for this.
I almost, I almost think unless, unless it's really remote, every neighborhood should connect to the Greenway, if we can have them connect, you know.
Absolutely. Any other comments on this one? Well, you can look forward to seeing that in a few months. The next one is REZ 2405, this is on Wade Avenue, the southwestern corner of Abert Road and Highway 98. And you saw this a few years ago, came through with a request to amend the RNPUD zoning district from the UDO and that request was denied. And so this is a completely different applicant, completely different proposal, because this one includes commercial. The issue before with this set of properties was the lack of commercial development included in that proposal. So this applicant is interested in doing a mix of residential and commercial on a little over 100 acres. They'd like to do 300 single-family units and a mixture of commercial, including a grocery store. And on the, the smaller commercial area on the top left of the slide, that says commercial, 2.457 acres. In that location, the applicant is interested in doing a little over 100,000 square feet of self-storage. In the neighborhood center zoning district, self-storage is not allowed. So the applicant would need to do a text amendment, either do a text amendment to ask the town board to consider putting self-storage in neighborhood center as an allowed use, or the applicant could change their rezoning application to be mixed districts. They could ask for general industrial for this piece, they could be asking for residential, a residential district for the peach-colored piece, and they could be asking for general commercial for the commercial area. And we've seen that, for example, in Parker Ridge, that's under construction right now, that is a mixture of residential medium and residential high. The residential high is for the townhomes, the residential medium is for the single-family detached. We have seen other applications where they ask for multiple zoning districts to fit what they're looking for. So I was curious to hear about your thoughts on what you think of self-storage included in this application, self-storage being potentially allowed in the neighborhood zoning district, or if you think it would be better to ask for varying zoning districts or you would like to leave it up to staff to make a professional judgment or anything.
I have one question before we answer that. That, where, that right there, the long part across the top, that's Wade and this is Young, is that right?
Across the top is Wade Avenue.
Yes.
And then on the right is Abert.
I meant Abert, I meant Abert, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, Abert, Young, Roseville, so it's the copper Roseville.
So are they proposing do the residential and commercial at the same time?
Some of it, yes, with neighborhood, with neighborhood center zoning, there is a requirement that you must have building permits for 50% of the commercial development before you can complete your residential component. That's how you all designed this, because you wanted to ensure that the commercial would be built.
I remember that. Yeah, we had an issue with this, this one before because they wouldn't even commit to like putting the water lines or anything into that commercial, so.
Right, right.
So I was saying, no.
So with this, with this district, they will be putting commercial in and in this case, there are two developers working together, one who is a commercial developer and one who's a residential developer.
Yeah, I think, I think the one before Paul was a residential group, who was that? That was.
It was Pulte.
Pulte, yeah, and this, this group, I think, is more of a urban, commercial development. Do you know them?
Hopper is a former client of the firm.
That's not Hopper though, that's.
Experience, it's.
Oh, Experience One.
Yeah, Experience One and a group out of Florida that starts with a W, it's like three letters, I can't remember.
I only know them from their attorney content.
But I think they do residential and commercial, I think that's the difference probably. They're right, Michael, I know you guys some contacts with them.
Yeah, actually, I think Experience One, they did Elizabeth Springs just south of here, so, but also.
Come up to the mic, so everybody can.
It's the same developer that did Elizabeth Springs?
Residential developer that did Elizabeth Springs, so that's right, just south. And then I think an example of another development they, they did that's kind of mixed use is Sweetwater in Apex. You've ever, you can look that up, maybe Google it, Sweetwater in Apex, and they were involved in that development. And that was more, I think, the mix of uses of residential and commercial kind of together, almost like West Park Village. So it won't be exactly like this one they're proposing, but just an example of something they've done.
Do you know if that one has storage?
I don't.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad place for storage because it's, the next thing beside is like a utility thing, so.
Sure, and there's a stream buffer that would separate the, whatever that uses from the residential area. Just the right.
So the reason that I was remembering these folks and their attorney is they are trying to coordinate the required road improvements at this location, if I'm thinking about the right project with DOT, as the Elizabeth Springs project required the construction of a signal at that intersection. And they are working with DOT to coordinate when and how that would happen. The town has no authority as to how DOT comes out on that, but as you can imagine, they, they would love to have the town weigh in and the town has politely declined as that was, that was created by the developer and now the seller on this site as to how that's working out.
I'm sorry, a traffic light where?
At Wade and Abert, is that right?
There's one.
There's already a traffic light.
It's improvements to that, that were required at some point in the future that now need to be made. And because it's a residential and commercial situation, which developer does that and when, as you can imagine, is sort of an interesting question, which the town doesn't, we just don't have a dog in that fight.
Just out of curiosity, Meredith, where is the watershed in relation to this? Is it close?
Great question, the critical watershed does touch.
It's based on the other side of the road.
There's.
It's on the east side of the road.
Watershed area on where my mouse is.
Okay.
And so the applicant would, I believe they're working with the state to try to regrade out of the watershed area there. The Elizabeth Springs to the south was successful with regrading out of the watershed for the front portion of that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So the two things I have on it are the lineup of that road up on Wade Avenue was the issue we had last time as well, because that's right across from a neighborhood and there's no, there's no traffic control there at all. And then the middle, basically the middle of section two, well, I shouldn't have said that, but the middle of section two, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was possibly looking to see if, about parkland in that general area too, as a recommendation, so.
What does the density end up with, taking all the commercial out of there?
Sure, if they look at the 75 acres allocated for residential, it comes to a density of about four units per acre.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing is going to be getting the commercial online, that's, I mean, that's always been our biggest issue, is making sure, and I know we have it written in there, but just making sure that that actually happens because.
Right.
I don't know, that's a, that's going to be a tough spot already.
Yes, sir.
So.
Yes, sir.
But is this primarily a commercial developer?
Right.
The, there's a partner out of Florida, so they are solely a commercial developer and, you know, there will be a lot of activity here and the TIA is, has just gotten started for this, so that will be interesting to see how that works.
Sure would. That will be interesting.
And this coming in June as well?
This one will take a little more time. So maybe you'll see it July or August, be my guess.
Do we need the, do we need the plans for the property across, over in Wake Forest, across Wade Avenue? I think that was going to be Thailey's at one point, is it still Thailey's owned?
I am not sure, we can certainly look into that.
Last time I heard it was.
This was supposed to be Thailey's, now it's not.
Yeah, I think, I think you put it on hold, so.
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure.
Just curious of what, I always like to see the picture of, just because that's not part of Roseville, we should still know what that is though, that's one over there.
That one ties together. So Mayor Curran, I heard you say you thought self-storage could be a reasonable use in that location. Would you, you and the rest of the board be comfortable if the applicant brought forward a text amendment to add self-storage as an allowed use in neighborhood center, or do you think it might be better to have that piece be industrial?
Not sure we want it in every neighborhood center.
Yeah, I want that separate.
I mean, you know, looking, that's not a bad place because it's kind of close to that utility company and it's across from the, it's a creek to run between it and all that kind of stuff, so.
Location makes sense.
But you know, every one, I don't think we would want to do that.
I don't think so either.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree. I think with the issue with this one, the applicant wanted to try to get it in neighborhood center because they need that square footage to meet the ratio that's required for, for a mixed-use district. I was wondering if they could, you know, zone it, request that it be rezoned to industrial and then through their development agreement, that is, you can, you're allowed to create an agreement about timing of commercial and mixture of uses, but you can't change the development standards per se in a development agreement. But I was wondering if in that development agreement, it could state, you can have credit for the non-residential space that's on this industrial piece of property for your, to make sure you're meeting your minimum commercial square footage for the neighborhood center district. That was another thought I had.
It's not a bad idea. It's pretty good, Meredith.
I don't know, just let Dave figure it out.
Depends what the LDO says. Yeah, well, clearly there's some items to be vetted on this, it's super preliminary. We, we often say with neighborhood commercial, a commercial use, however, self-storage, I keep hearing the term industrial use. Is self-storage only permitted in industrial? I don't know off the top of my head, is that?
Yes, in the LDO it is.
Okay, I thought we had talked at one time about different sorts of self-storage and that you had the sort of old style with the barbed wire and the metal low buildings and now you have the ones that look like a multi-tenant office building as a different kind of a thing.
We have one of those on Jones Dairy Road.
Yes.
Right.
All of that came up when the Jonesory Storage Project was being rezoned.
So some other Wake County cities treat those as different things.
I don't know why, I mean, that one went around and around, I think, you know, I'm not sure why we landed, I don't recall.
I guess it was, we zoned it industrial and added conditions so that it would look decent. That would be my guess, is how we backed into that. Okay. I, I'm assuming that given the location here, this is going to be of the more modern style, if you're going to be placing it next to your residential project and try to market that. I don't know that the eyeball on Wade Avenue would consider it an industrial use. So that, that may actually be, the text amendment would be amending the permitted use table to have a certain kind of self-storage in your commercial districts rather than having this in the neighborhood, self-storage in neighborhood commercial, which may never make sense. How about that for not reading the LDO and just coming up some ideas?
It's pretty good.
Anything else? All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that, good job. Anything from the attorney or town manager real quick?
No, sir, hoping to make the.
All right.
Very short appearance perhaps that the UNC Tar Heels will make in the tournament, so if we can get out of here, that'd be great.
Anything from you, Eric?
Short appearance, short, they'll win tonight.
Only updates I have is, I have two, both are kind of Main Street project and Main Street related. You should have received either at your desk or if you, you all live in the town, a mailer that supports our local businesses in Roseville, they listed on, on this flyer, listed the businesses that are at the main and young intersection and also those that are, have recently entered that area that are located inside of Cobblestone. We've been having ongoing conversation with them on how we can support. There'll also be some additional adventures and things on social media to continue to support them. The mayor's been participating in some things, like literally participating in some things by attending classes and also we're working with, our Parks and Recreation Department has had a few meetings with them to come up with different events to help with promoting their businesses. We received a notification from Commissioner Long that they're we having.
Citizens in conversation.
Citizens in conversation?
Yes, sir.
So making different reaches from different angles and different departments to continue to support our business community. The other part of my update is with regards to the Main Street project. They, Ferr Smith had mobilized, there was four crews out working today, two at the intersection as, two at the intersection, one direct across from town hall and the other working down in front of Walbrook. They've been making great strides since initiating their work on last Wednesday with the arrival of materials. They are slightly ahead of schedule and the storm this past week didn't hinder them at all. One thing to be that you've seen notifications about in the news blast and also on the signs is that on Thursday and Friday this week, they'll, something that was supposed to happen two weeks out, it's actually happened this week, which is a good sign, and that'll be, there'll be a two-day closure of the Main Street so that they can go ahead and make those service connections across, and I think it's like four different spots that they need to go to make the service connections across. There'll be another instance in the future, I think about four, five weeks out where they have to do it again for another two days to make those service connections as well across, but on this Thursday and Friday, they will be making those service connections. We were, the mayor inquired about the timing of it. Peak time for sales for businesses is on the weekend and so late in the week or early in the week are the times that were a little bit best, were best to do that and they're assuring that they can get the work done in that amount of time. But Ferr Smith has shown, kind of backed up their commitment to moving things forward and things have been going great with the project, so we're excited about the materials arriving, which was kind of like that thing that was, had everybody. So we're excited about the materials arriving, which was kind of like that thing that was, had everybody frustrated. And the fact that they're unable to run, they put, they put a lot of water lines in the ground. And City Raleigh has been super supportive in maintaining the inspections of it, particularly since they're working in three different locations at once. And so I'll, Ferr Smith presented a timeline or look ahead to us last week. Was last, yes, last week. And we discussed it with the small business owners, also discussed it with the mayor in the meeting. And so we're going to work with them to see how we can kind of continue cutting that, cutting that time down and see what some re-engineering we can do with that. And I hope to bring that to you all within the next week or so and communicate out to the community with regards to those, those milestone dates. But it is not, it will not be next year. When it opens, it's in late summer. It's been the general term language we've been using, but we're, since we have the timeline and we have all the materials here, we can kind of work on what those specific milestones would be as a worst-case scenario. But the weather's been in our favor. The timing of the storm was during the weekend, thankfully, wasn't during the week. And with the continued installation of more water and sewer infrastructure up there, they'll be able to better handle water and from rain and stormwater runoff as the project kind of progresses into the summer. But things look well, and I'll be bringing a detailed update to you. And also, we email you all on Fridays. We have our stand-up meeting on Friday mornings at 10:00 AM. And then once we get through that meeting, we kind of work through some things. And I'll send out an update like midday Friday for you all as a board. That information also goes to Candace, and then she includes it in the news blast. Whereas if it's some urgent, it'll go out this weekend. But it'll get to the community, the greater community on Tuesday of next week, is what's, when she schedules the time, the scheduled time that the news blast goes out with project updates.
My only question is, with them having the number of crews that they have out there right now, are they expecting any unforeseen issues or possible delays?
No, we're, we're not anticipating any delays. We've worked through all the things that we know about. The fuel tank has been resolved. So the Dominion has come out and they moved the gas line that was impeding that. They've, so they're ready to install the stormwater infrastructure on that side. All of the fiber, Duke Energy is onboard, they're communicating. CenturyLink has reached out, they're mobilizing to, to, and as soon as they get done with the water lines that are in the way of them taking those remaining services off the poles, they'll do that. Ferr Smith's going to go ahead and install conduit while they're in the area. So Century, we're going to do that for CenturyLink. And then we should see the removal of those poles before the, man, those, those, the poles will be removed before the intersection opens back up. And so everything is kind of like stacked on top of each other. But it's appearing to be running seamlessly since everybody's active. Thank you all. Some of the grease that's on the wheel came from you all reaching out to your colleagues. And so things are moving. And so if, if something comes up, well, y'all will be the first to know. But right now, we don't foresee anything. I'm pretty sure we found everything that we can find in that hole up there. And I hate to be lighthearted about it, but we found a lot. We're waiting on, like the well still need to be abandoned. We're waiting on some additional clearances from DOT. But they've already looked into it as far as an assessment to its proximity of the fuel, the old fuel tank and it being an issue. They don't think that'll be the issue, so they'll just fill it up with 57 stone or so kind of floor will fill. And so that should be a pretty simple abandonment of that well that's there.
So it should be full steam ahead?
Full steam ahead, they're rolling.
What I was looking for.
Good news. Thank you, anything else? Christine, anything?
Just a reminder that next Wednesday, March 26th, the town of Rose, Wendell, excuse me, town of Wendell is hosting the Eastern Wade County Local Government Association meeting to be held at the new Wade Tech campus. And you'll have a guest speaker there to discuss jurisdiction updates for all municipalities, starting at 6:00.
Sounds good. Everybody make sure you get your name to Christina, so we, I think they're asking for.
For, for, because of dinner catering.
And the new Wade, the new Wade County or Wade Community College is at the end of Roseville Road. So, you know, you go all the way to the end of Roseville Road, that's it. They got a Roseville Road address.
I'm not going to say a word.
Say what, Eric? Anything else from anybody, anybody from the board? Without any objection, opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.